Thank you. We didn't hear it here. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting. For Monday, April eighth, time is six o'clock. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. This meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion. If anyone is recording the meeting, please make it known to the Vice Chair. In attendance tonight is myself, Chairman Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Burke Diane Gale, Active Acting C A O Chief Robert Landis, Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni, and Lisa Anderson is in the other room. If we could, please, Diane, could you lead us in the pledge tonight? Okay, this time I'll open the floor to public comments. If anybody has anything they'd like to address to the Select Board, now is your opportunity. Last week I started in the room, so this week, one of the meetings, I'll start on Zoom. If anyone has anything they'd like to address to the Select Board, if you could use the hand raise function, please go ahead. Seeing none will go to the room. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak under public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to our first appointment, which is Fire Chief Rich Stefanowitz requests to increase the current ambulance billing rates for the town's ambulance service. Chief?
And I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Bishop to join me.
Certainly.
So.
Hello Deputy Chief.
Hello. I was able to get some paperwork out to you, which kind of gave us an overview of the ambulance's performance as well as some of the increasing call routes, calls themselves, what some of those are. It also covered through a really lengthy process, and unfortunately somewhat of a not very high tech process of determining the amount of calls that we are capturing, that we refer to as a second call or even a third call. So there's a lot of data here, and I just kind of want to go through some of them before we get into what we're actually charging for rates right now and what the proposed increases would be. So when we talk about the ambulance, we want to look at it as four different categories of billing, first of all, as well as call volume. So we'll refer to B L S ambulance calls, which is basic life support. Basic Life Support one, which means there's just a set number of interventions for that call. A L S two, usually a very high acuity call with several interventions, and then A L S intercepts. And we provide A L S intercepts to Granville on a routine basis, but we're also equipped to do that for other communities if need be. So when we look at the overall numbers, in comparison, we used 2021, and these are calendar years, not fiscal years, 2022 and 2023 for the most current data. So just looking at overall call volume and the calls we responded to in 2021, we responded to 1,188 calls. However, there were mutual aid responses from neighboring communities, forty-seven of those calls, which brought the total true responses to 1,235 calls for services. In 2022, we responded to 1,286 with forty-one mutual aid responses coming into town. We also provided more mutual aid and provided more intercepts than we did in 21. We had one of each in 2021, but now that we moved to A L S full-time in 2021, we had mutual aid responses four times in 2022 and eight intercepts were provided. But for our total call of services was 1,327. Now, important to know, further, that's not the total number of transports. That's the number of responses, okay? Transports are anywhere from sixty to eighty percent, depending on the type of call you're looking at. B L S versus A L S one or A L S two. It's really hard to capture that data and give it to you specifically. We're working on some other information from the state to see if you can provide that. But right now, our current software has a real, it's limited to be able to give us that differential, okay? But there's data out there that breaks it down to the minute, the time of day, the time, you know, the day of the week and so on and so forth. So jumping to 2023, we responded to 1,436 calls. Those are the ones we responded to. Eighty-two of those calls were second ambulance calls that we were able to capture. In 2022, we were only able to get twenty of those calls. In 22, we also added full-time fire prevention officer that is a Monday through Thursday position typically. And he's also an E M T, so he responds on the ambulance. The same time the deputy came on board and was responding to ambulance calls. So our staffing during the day, Monday through Thursday, is very good. But if you look at the numbers closely on our mutual aid responses, you'll see a gap in Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and even some Thursdays where we really realize I'm mutually coming into town. In 2023, we provided mutual aid fifty-two times, but we also had sixty-six requests for mutual aid coming into town. So that numbers up, that's a potential for us to be able to look at with additional staffing of capturing those as well as working with our per diems, which has helped on some of those. But overall, we had responses, requests for the ambulance of 1,502 times. So in three, three years roughly, we've seen a significant jump of almost fourteen to fifteen percent just for calls for services. And then when we break it down, it gets a little complicated as to where they go. But we saw an increase across the board in mutual aid requests in 23, as well as the capability for us to respond to those calls. Any questions on that? Sheet as it's presented right now. And the backup sheets to that looked through each one of the months in each of the corresponding years. And it references when the mutual aid calls occurred and the days of the week, not so much days and the time of the day. But that data is available, but I didn't feel it was necessary because we're working twenty-four hours anyway. That's kind of how we look at the, at the day. So those that indicate W S K indicates that we captured that second call on those days. And you'll notice that mostly Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays is when we capture those. We were able to pick up some on the weekends, Sundays being the worst. And that statistically is true for all three years consistently, okay? But overall, we saw an increase with the additional staffing coming in in the form of fire prevention and the deputy responding, as I did when I was a deputy, to capture a lot of those second calls. So when we look at ambulance dispositions, which is the chart here, this talks about basically how those calls break down for B L S calls, A L S one and A L S two, and then the total of number of transports that we provided. So on that sheet, let's say for instance, on 2023, it shows that we provided nine hundred and sixty-three transports. Those are what we refer to as billable calls. Those are the calls we transported. That doesn't mean someone came in here mutual aid and transported, and we didn't make any money off of that call. They bill their billing rate. So if Westfield were to come in, they don't bill at our rate, they bill at their rate, whatever that happens to be. Same for Agawam or for Southfield and so on and so forth. So that statistically kind of breaks down what the dispositions were for twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. And you could see that the majority of those calls are going to be A L S level calls. We had in twenty-one somewhat of a transition from A L S twenty-four seven, and we're still kind of B L S heavy. But then we moved into the, the A L S world and our A L S call volume went up. While B L S stayed somewhat consistent from about two hundred and sixty down to only about two hundred calls on B L S side. In twenty twenty-one and certainly in twenty twenty, the B L S calls, when there was need for A L S, was still the intercepts. Okay, we have not done an entire A L S intercept this year, and we only did three of them last year. So that has made a significant difference in the money that we paid out typically to Westfield or to Agawam for intercepts. All right. When we look at collection rates, we're doing really, really well. We hire a third-party company by the name of ComStar. Do not confuse them with Comcast because ComStar knocks it out of the park every chance they get. They are wonderful to work with. They statistically track a lot of what's happening trend-wise, but also agency-wise. And it was actually the owner of the company, Rick Martin, who, when I talked to him last September, said, you know, you haven't had a rate increase in some time and it's time because everybody else is moving past you. And again, these rates were adjusted in 2021 was the last time we had an increase. But you can see, we talked about our percentages collected for B L S, A L S one and A L S two consistently in the high nineties. Twenty twenty-three, it's difficult to look at that year and say, okay, we did great. But keep in mind that in 2023, we're still going after some of those collections. So the billable call, if it occurs in twenty-three, will show up as revenue collected in twenty-three. If it's not yet collected, it could be something that's tangled up in litigation or insurance claims and things like that. So it's a little bit of a delay. But if you look back at ninety, at twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, you'll see they were in the high nineties for each one of those. And then they talk about the percentage of revenue collected is based on the standards typically set by Medicare. And on Medicare collections, we're typically around one hundred percent on those, as well as veteran services, one hundred percent on those. And for the most part, most of the insurance companies as well, where, where all agencies suffer, private or fire-based, is in self-pays and the self-insured, okay? Very fortunately, in Massachusetts, we do not have a lot of self-insured because you're required to carry health insurance in Massachusetts. But there are still some transports that has, that are completely uninsured. ComStar tries to work with all of our clients to try to make sure that we have a successful collection for services provided. But even they do their best, but even they are unsuccessful sometimes on the, on the self-insured and uninsured. But we're doing really, really well overall, and so that's a good thing. So if we start looking at the rates, first of all, just preface this, the rates I gave you on Thursday, which is when I delivered the package here, I was hoping to get the most updated one for 2024, and it showed up at four o'clock on Friday. So that fee sheet on that survey compared to the one from 2022 has a few departments that have been added to it, which will taint some of those numbers. So if you look quickly, I'll list the departments that have been added are Hatfield, Munson and Orange. And each one of them obviously come in at different rates. None of them are exactly the same. We often compare ourselves to Munson because population-wise, service-wise and area coverage were pretty similar. They are a newer A L S service as well, too. We're not quite orange as far as staffing is concerned, but again, comparable numbers. But more importantly, we look at the adjustments on the averages for B L S, A L S one and A L S two. And you'll see that compared to the chart from 2022, there have been some increases there. And some of the communities had significant increases, but some of them also remain the same. I think most notably is going to be Ware had a significant jump in, in how they're, they're looking at things. East Long Meadow had a pretty significant jump. Agawam was marginal. Belcher Town quite a bit. And West Springfield also kind of similar to, to what Agawam had done, just a marginal increase. But Wilbraham also kind of increased their rate significantly. But again, speaking in averages, if you look at the chart even from 2022, our figures on the chart for twenty-four are unchanged, so we can use those for comparisons. We're below in all the categories. And some more exaggerated than others. I think B L S is the one area where we were the lowest. When you look at the new sheet for twenty-four and you look at B L S, we're significantly lower. Same is true for A L S one and A L S two is pretty steep. But again, given the level of, of service provided on that, there's justification there. When we look at A L S intercepts and what we provide for, and what we charge, it's a set rate of $275. And that's for anybody that we intercept. It doesn't change from agency to agency. And currently, the average is going to be $320 and fourteen cents. If you're asking, Grand V Fire from Grand V, Mass is the one that put forty-seven cents at the end of that, so. That's a typo or somebody just being fun with it, but it definitely gave you a weird number to look at. So I understand a lot to digest here, so I tried to simplify it as best I could. There's a chart looks a little like this one here. It talks a little bit about where we are rate-wise in comparison to community averages and what some of those differences look like and the shortfalls that were compared to the community averages. And then there's a chart on the bottom that talks about proposed rate increases. And it's broken down for twenty-five percent, twenty fifteen, ten and five percent increments. It shows the adjusted amount and what that would be as well for both, for all, for all three categories. At this time, I'm not anticipating or nor do I feel we need to increase the A L S rate. I would like to look at increasing the mileage just to become a little bit more in line with what's out there. But when we start talking about A L S one, A L S two and our B L S transports, it runs quite a spectrum of numbers. And I would suggest that we take a look at this and kind of figure out what we would like to do for percentage increases, if that's even on the table. Deputy, anything to add at this time?
Just only that, like everything else, our fees to provide the service have to match the fees that we have to use when we buy the supplies. And you can't stay stagnant forever and try to run an even base.
I was asked at the budget hearing last year, what does it cost to, to run the ambulance? And I said, whoa, I don't have the answer for that. And the deputy and I have both been working on that to kind of even come up with a ballpark figure. And the more you look into it, the harder and harder it gets because there's so many variables. Because you have to take into consideration which hospital they transported to, how many supplies did they use, what was the fuel cost at that time? Fortunately, the deputy's been working on a very in-depth federal program that's looking at that number specifically. But we won't have that data until 2025.
Yeah.
Yeah, by the time it all gets taken in, and it'll already be two years old at that point because they're collecting from last year and this year. Excuse me, and we've done everything as much as recording our, how much fuel we consume. Every time we put fuel in, we can record the gallonage, it gets recorded and that's going in there. How often do we replace tires? What types of supplies are we using? But the medical field after COVID saw a huge spike in the cost of medical supplies. And like a lot of other things, it hasn't come down. In fact, it continues to go up. We're trying our best to buy bulk purchases on items that don't expire. But even then, there's always a little bit of a risk because in E M S, everything expires eventually. Even in very regular use items, there, you know, those are like four, four months on the shelves. And the stuff that you don't use a lot could be out there for six months or a year, but eventually it all expires. And we've been very good at watching what we do, but you can't really do on-time delivery with a lot of the stuff. Because you could, consumables, you can go through them very quickly based on whatever happens in the town, so you don't want to get caught short.
There's also some mandated equipment that we have to carry for like the I F A X and emergency bags for any active shooter situation. And we ended our, it was about five years is the length of time that that equipment lasts. And although it is medical supply, types of gauze and things that belong in those bags, the purchase, I think just to fill the required amount of bags that we have to have was like $5,000. But that's every five years and it just, it's hard to balance out, you know, when those things come. They, you don't get to decide when they expire.
Well. Couple things. One, I'll be glad to throw those things out every five years.
Yeah.
Unused in a trend.
Same.
Second, I've actually had this conversation a couple of times about this. I think once with you, and there's like a fixed and variable cost to all this, right? Even if you had zero calls in a year, you still have a ginormous amount of expense in order to be ready to take the first call and then, you know, the hundredth call or whatever. And then you've got the variable cost of, you know, each run and then the hospitals and the gas and, and all the other stuff. But it, I would not, I am not envious of whoever has to try to calculate that, whether it's you or the federal government. It's not going to be an easy number to get to.
I'm going to be very good friends with Laura by the end.
I'll bet.
We could ballpark it, but even when you say that, you go, oh, that's not accurate either. Because the minute you have three people on a call because it's a high acuity call and they go to Bay State, that call just almost doubled in what the average is because of that extra person, the mileage and so on and so forth, and the supplies used. So it's very difficult. And if you came out with a law of averages, people will hold this to them.
No, absolutely.
How come you're charging me this when you told, you know, said in the meeting, it was only $300 for the call? And that's a very random number. I just pulled out of the sky. That's not it.
And it's the same thing for.
There's a price to turn the key on.
Right, yeah. For the first time, right, for the first time, and you've got the building and all the stuff and everything.
It's a, it's a really. It was a rough winter, so heat was high.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
But you know, it's the same, you know, and the fire service is no different. It's just different math. I mean, you've got really expensive equipment sitting there that hopefully you never have to use, right? We'd all be glad to buy that stuff and never have to take that thing out of the station in anger.
This data collection program, it actually goes to the functionality of the building. So I have to have whatever improvements have been done to the building, what, it's everything. They'll want to know how much we paid to plow the driveways. It's, it's a lot.
It's all, it's all relative, right? We have to do it. My third thing, I guess, is, is a question. Is A L S is A L S is A L S?
No.
I get it, the one and the two.
Oh.
Yeah, so. Agawam, Westfield, Southwick.
It's exactly the same. The parameters are the same.
So why would, would we then look to? Or why wouldn't we look to, or would we look to Westfield and Agawam as our key mutual aid partners? And be, and even though they are not in lockstep in billing. Well, yeah. Why wouldn't we just follow what Westfield's doing or follow what Agawam's doing? And I did, I did notice real quick, I didn't look in detail, but there's a $300 delta on an A L S two call from Westfield to Agawam. And we are below both of them, though just below Westfield. And Agawam's at thirty-one hundred bucks leading the way. And that, you know, instead of, I guess, it's one of those things, do you look community to community and say, okay, Munson is the same size as Southwick? Or do you look at more regional and say, okay, Westfield and Agawam?
I did.
If Westfield's coming because, you know, we're not available, wouldn't it be great to get the same bill as you got from Westfield and vice versa?
That's fine. And that certainly is a very good way to look at it. These, all of the services are what the community can support and will endorse. We recognize that, and I'm not afraid to say that out loud because that's really what it needs to be. It needs to be a balance against what covers the cost of the service, but is also what the community can support.
Sure.
And I think that that's a good basis to look at Agawam and Westfield, our neighbors, say, yep. Because if you look at Granville, they're the most expensive one on the sheet.
They're way up.
Yeah.
They're out there.
They're out there, but that really, they don't even provide A L S. So if we were to provide an A L S intercept at Granville, and it's an A L S level two, Granville will bill for that call at A L S level two rates.
Yeah.
And pay us the $275 intercept fee and they collect the rest, even though they're not an A L S service. So a little unbalanced in that regard. So we may want to take Granville out as an outlier on the high side. And then even when you look at this, I believe Turner's Falls and Southwick are two of the lowest on this chart. So Ware does a little differently because they bill for interventions. But if you compare Ware this year, this chart where they were last chart, they went up even higher than us on B L S. Higher than us on all, all three categories actually, and they bill for intervention.
I wonder if you, if you're conscious when you get into the ambulance in Ware, if they give you the little menu of things you can choose from. Would you like a cardiac monitor?
Right, right.
So if we go in the middle of Agawam and Westfield, it would be eleven hundred, eighteen hundred and three thousand.
Eleven, eighteen and three.
Yeah, well. Agawam's twelve, Westfield's thirteen. We could go up to eleven and still be below, or we can.
On the B L S.
Or we can just match the lowest one of each community, right?
Yeah, well, either way, our B L S is going to go up significantly, even if we matched Westfield's on the twelve, you know? You guys are the experts. Where do you need to be? Give me the high number. Well, the high number for B L S would be the twenty percent. And even if we went up twenty-five percent on the B L S side, we're still not at where Westfield is.
Correct.
And so if you wanted to do twenty-five across the board, which is what our increase was last time we had an increase, I think that that kind of puts us in a pretty good place.
Why does it have to be a percentage? Why can't you just do an absolute number and get it there?
We can.
That's why I'm saying, so it could be.
What did you promote?
It could be twelve hundred, two thousand and three thousand.
Well, twenty percent would be eleven thirteen. But our number is really low.
Right.
And I, I want to assume as we step in the additional staffing too, that B L S call volume will go down, right? You don't, it doesn't matter. If you go out A L S, you bill A L S, right?
No, you bill on the disposition. So that's this chart that we talked about earlier. A B L S call is a B L S call. It's billed at a B L S rate.
Gotcha.
And that's based on the acuity of the call. And that will be challenged and has been challenged by insurance companies as well, too. To say, I'm sorry, but this did not meet the requirement of an A L S level call, even though you did those interventions. And we're comfortable saying, you're right, that's fine, but at least we have peace of mind knowing that that person got a full A L S workup. And if they didn't need it, then okay, we'll, we'll take the cost of the electrodes and the, and whatever else we use on that call. But for the most part, we don't have that discussion with the insurance companies. They've been very supportive of our services. And our people use a very good judgment to determine what's what. So Diane, can you just run one more time?
Yeah, twelve hundred, two thousand and three thousand.
Okay.
Would put us at the lowest B L S and in the middle of A L S one and two with the other two communities.
Okay.
And then we can just match the thirty-six dollars from Westfield on the mileage rate. Then you got nice round numbers, your where is the need to be. And then and then the intercept rate is the same as.
We'd say the same, two seventy-five. Which is what Agawam and Westfield both do. Well. Given my preference.
You know, at these percentages, it's not getting you exactly where you want to be, you know, just go for the dollar.
There, there's two ways to look at it, right? I mean, we could have very easily just put round numbers on here. I like the percentages because we worked with it last time when we had incremental increase at twelve and a half percent, followed by a second at twelve and a half percent. But if we wanted to make a judgment today and say, these would be the new rates affected such and such a date, I, I like the, the proposal right out there right now for B L S at twelve. A L S one and two, and even two thousand and three thousand for the A L S two.
And what do you want to do with the mileage?
Well, I was recommended to go to thirty-six for Westfield. Want some language? I personally would like to see it at thirty-eight.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Yeah. More further. Well, that's it, you know, given the rule, and, and not to mention, there's things that also, the mileage is supposed to cover the vehicle costs and transport costs, you know? I'm not going to, everybody knows the roads in Southwood are worse than the roads in Westfield or Agawam. It's just a reality. I live in Agawam, I know. And those things will get, get better, but it adds to the wear and tear of the vehicle. And as I was talking earlier today, tires are the number one consumable in the ambulances. No matter what truck you buy, you go through all the tires. And that's just, you know, that helps offset some of those costs. I guess that would be the final proposal, be the twelve thousand on B L S, two thousand for A L S level one, three thousand for A L S level two, and mileage increase to thirty-eight and keep the two hundred and seventy-five. That's a twenty percent increase at B L S sixty, called sixteen. A L S one and thirteen, A L S two, twelve, two and three from your existing rates.
You don't think it needs to go higher? You think that would be okay there for some time then?
Sometime would be relative.
Yeah.
Right, I think it would happen again next year and.
It would make sense to review these annually. It really would. If we're really looking to keep costs in, in line with the rate and not have a, a, you know, a windfall somewhere or, you know, a significant shortfall, we, I think we really should look at it every year. And I think looking at it based on a, just a solid number increase instead of a percentage, it would give us a better attitude towards understanding of where we are going forward, you know?
Anything okay with the numbers? I'd like to see the mileage somewhere in the middle of Westfield and, and Agawam though, instead of up at thirty-eight. They're at thirty-seven and thirty-six. So I, I'd be okay at thirty-seven, I guess, but.
I don't want to cover the costs, so whatever's going to cover the cost.
They go to forty and forty-five and forty. They go up forty and forty five and forty eight in other communities. Boarding, boarding.
But keep in mind, Medicaid adjusted mileage, that at the bottom of this chart talks about what that, um, mileage is. So if the average rate is thirty five, the Medicare allowable rate is, for ru, rule, which is us, is nine dollars and two cents a lane mileage. On the mile. And Medicare Medicaid makes a substantial portion of our.
It doesn't matter where you set it, but for the Medicare ones.
Yeah, exactly, you can charge you on Medicare, still on Medicare, paying a percentage and that's a fixed number and that's what everybody gets. In, in, in the end of it all, you know, it's a dollar per mile on a thousand calls. So you could figure out exactly what that is, but I don't, you know. I don't have a problem with a thirty seven, it would be acceptable as well, to, it's still above, you know, what we are right now. And still not the highest, it's still not the lowest. Well, that's why I asked them what they need, so I'm going to defer to them. What they need is what I want to give them.
So we're saying thirty seven on mileage, twelve hundred BLS, two thousand ALS one, three thousand ALS two, and two seventy five intercepts. Agreed?
Do you think we should, I was thinking the same thing. You think we could increase the intercept?
Three hundred seems to be the, oh, two seventy five, two seventy, three, 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 three.
Only for Granville, right?
Just add forty seven cents and call it good, I don't know. I do, I mean, if they've got a disparity in there, I know. It's even tougher to run a service up there, but, you know, they're billing out at thirty five hundred and paying us the twenty.
Right, so if we were to go to three hundred of the intercept, I don't even think they'd feel it. Right, and it's a twenty five dollar increase over the cost of that.
And our, our predominant, our ALS intercepts are for Granville, Solent.
For Granville, excellent. And Solent's not on this chart right now, they're not running an ambulance, so they wouldn't be here, but I'm not sure what their old numbers used to be when they ran that. But we share that community, there's, um, so, um, out of Beckett covers some of it and then Hilltown covers some of it as well, too. It's kind of divvied up in thirds depending on geography where the call comes in.
We have the number on here, on the charts. The ALS quantity was relatively small.
I think Solent's yearly EMS rooms was like forty something.
That would make it three hundred bucks at least.
No dispute for me.
Even three hundred.
Yeah.
No dispute for me.
All right, so let's, let's codify this. So the BLS rate proposed is twelve hundred dollars, ALS one is two thousand dollars, ALS two is three thousand dollars. The mileage rate is thirty seven dollars and the ALS intercept would be three hundred dollars. Did I capture that correctly?
That's how I got it.
Yeah, I like it, yes.
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
I will make that motion to go with those rates.
Second.
Any other further discussion?
An effective date.
What, what, when, when would you like that to be effective?
So it would be a very clean sweep if, I, again, it doesn't matter on the fiscal year. So we're changing some of our software right now, so that could add to how we cap, capture a little bit more data. Um, if we have that in place by May fifteenth, so if we do the increase on June one.
You want to update your motion accordingly?
The motion to raise the rates for, as of June first.
Second.
You said, May, June first is when you want it?
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And it was only supposed to be five minutes on the event and I finally ran over, we're making up on Saturday.
Cliff called it to make it free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, um. Is Ethan Davidson, he's not here, is he on Zoom? Or out there? You see him here?
No.
All right. He's got to run out of time. We'll hold him over till next week. I did see an email from Mr. Davidson earlier today, but it wasn't directed to me, it was just a copy. Okay. Payables. Payroll and minutes, acknowledge payables warrant two, four, two, three, B. Dated April first, in the amount of four hundred and forty nine thousand, five hundred and seventy five dollars and sixty five cents. Okay. I know I sent the changes back, but, and so did you, and you approve open session meeting minutes from three, twenty five, twenty four.
Make a motion to accept the open session meeting minutes from three, twenty five, twenty four.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
And same for April first.
I'm going to make that same motion for April first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay. Uh, last week, this came up after we had already posted for the meeting. I had a conversation with Jessica Menzone. Regarding. Early voting for local elections. And I did not at all feel comfortable. Posting an amended agenda and having that on the agenda for last Monday. Given the sensitivity of the topic and the fact that frankly, my term is up and my name might be on the ballot. And so I didn't want to have that appear on an amended agenda, so I carried it to this week for discussion amongst the board. So for this year, we're going to have early voting. Those dates are already posted, they're on the website, everybody can come and vote on whatever days that are on the website to do it. And hopefully we'll be able to submit for some level of reimbursement from the state for the, for the time and the hours that are committed to that process. That being said, I wanted to have a discussion with this board. I noticed, I think it was Agawam or was it Westfield? Had a discussion just this past week regarding opting out of early voting for local elections. So I wanted to put it to all of us to have a discussion and kind of set a direction at least for next year and maybe even going forward. Um, and I don't want to, well, I'll just give you, we're, we already have mail-in voting. We have absentee ballots and you have in-person voting on the day of the election. So someone who can't be here on the day of the election can certainly do an absentee ballot. Or they can elect to do mail-in voting now for all elections, you got the form in the mail, people can check it. I think we mailed out over, she, she told me, well over a thousand ballots or something like that. So is it worth it? To, do we, do, does everyone get a chance to vote if we don't have early voting? Or do we need to have the early voting to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to vote, given the myriad of options that are available for people to vote? The way things are set up now?
Well, for decades before this, we didn't need early voting.
Correct.
So I would be, say, get rid of it. That's my preference. There's plenty of other options.
How many people took advantage of it?
It was very small numbers each day, I don't know what the poll.
He sent, uh, they sent an email every day during early voting for the primaries. Jason's looking those up right now.
What was the total percentage?
It wasn't big numbers, I mean, people did come in. But it, and it was doubled, I believe it might be added up, it's double digits, maybe it made it to a hundred total.
I was, I know it's double digits because it was like twenty seven, thirty two.
But I just think with, if you have, and if you take away the option or delete the option to have early voting. People have at least, well, they have three other ways to come in and, and, and vote. One is mail, one is absentee, and one is to vote on the day of the election. So if they can't do one, they still have two other options available. So it's not like we're saying, like, if you can't, you know, you work a double shift on Tuesday and you cannot get there to vote while the polls are open. Well, then your, your vote doesn't count, right? You could always even take an absentee ballot for that too, but, okay, you still have the mail-in voting option, et cetera, et cetera. And I just think, especially given our histor, is, the trend on local voting is not great. Though I was heartened by the number of people that did turn out to vote in the presidential primary, was a big number. Um, you know, but in the local elections. You know, you may have, I don't even recall the last local election, how many people total turned out throughout the course of those hours, not including the early voting and everything else.
See, Saturday, February twenty fourth, they had thirty six, Monday, February twenty sixth, they had twenty six. I'm looking for anything that says early voting, that was the only thing that popped up at the moment, make note. Those are the two numbers that I have, so. I don't know if just had to send out like a grand total, but I'm not seeing one.
But when we, when we have that early voting, you have to staff for it.
Yep.
And either pay overtime or, or call in additional staff in order to do it. And those people are unavailable to do whatever else that they normally do, do.
So at some time, we made, we voted to do early, but we can revoke it?
Yeah, it was something, it, it was done a few years ago, it was part of a, and it was actually, it came out of, somewhat out of the, all the COVID things too, to kind of keep people spaced out at the polls, if you will, but then, you know, and then we've had mail-in, which has become, you know, state law. But this, they actually left a local opt-in op for, at the, at the early voting.
When do we have to make this decision?
I don't think we're any rough because. She did, she did not say in the letter I had, did you see one?
I didn't see it.
I didn't see a date in there that we had to decide by. I just think, we, I just think with all the options, I wanted to be clear that I don't think we're looking, you know, no one's looking to deny anybody their right to vote. And the, and multiple options to vote, this would just cuts down on one lane, if you will. And I, I, I just don't see it increasing the turnout at the polls dramatically by having this. And it does create a bit of a burden for the staff at Town Hall to do it. We can certainly carry it under old business for next week, but I just wanted to have an open and frank discussion about it.
I'd like to see what those numbers were for the last few.
Sure, I think I would want to see the numbers and the costs associated.
And then what's Justice's feel on it this past time around firsthand?
Cause, and there, there was, there is some reporting that you have to do to the state and there is some reimbursement available from the state. But we know, for those that have seen this movie, uh, they always give you money until they don't give you money. And so if you're locked in, you're locked in.
Here's your mandate.
Yeah, we're going to help you for the first couple of years and then the money goes away and it becomes kind of an unfunded mandate type of thing. So can we send a request to Jessica Menzone? You want to know the total early voting for the last few elections?
In the overall.
And the overall cost, we have those numbers, so.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's why I wanted to have this.
And, and then her input on what kind of burden it was, if she can just.
Sure.
Short memo on that.
Yep, but I said, that's why I wanted to bring this in front of the whole board as a regularly scheduled appointment, a regular scheduled item. Okay, now I'm going to get the next. Bear with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, of course, bear. So last week I asked. I had asked if we could put on the agenda this week that we make a proclamation which we.
That's fine.
Yeah. Here we go. And here is the proclamation. Whereas realizing an urgent need for donors around the country, the National Donate Life Month observance was established in two thousand and three to promote a greater understanding of the life-saving benefits of donation. And whereas National Donate Life Blue and Green Day is celebrated each April and represents the national effort to raise awareness for organ and tissue donation and transplantation. And whereas the transplantation of organs and tissues is made possible through the compassion of organ and tissue donors, enabling gifted surgeons to not only save thousands of lives every year, but also to restore health and sight to the recipients. And whereas people of all ages, ethnic backgrounds, and religions need organ transplants. And whereas the town of Southwick supports the vital efforts to learn about donating tissue and organs, registering as organ and tissue donors, and willingness to give the precious gifts, gifts of health, sight, and life to people in need. And whereas the town of Southwick recognizes National Donate Life Month and National Blue and Green Day has great opportunity to join in the fight to save lives. Therefore, it is to be proclaimed by the town of Southwick that the month of April is designated as Donate Life Month. And, uh, by vote of this board, uh, and by our signature, we would make that proclamation.
Make a motion, sir?
I would, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please, Doug Mogul, yes?
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Thank you very much. And, um, and as you, some of you may know, once, we had a, a lady in town who was a, uh, heart recipient. She recently, fairly recently passed away, unrelated to the heart, but, um, she was a, a big force behind doing this every April. We used to have a big kind of event out here and a flag raising for it. But I still want to continue the tradition and to make, um, continue to have April be Donate Life Month and encourage people to sign on to be a uh, organ and tissue donor.
I think the lights are going to be green and blue as well?
I think, I think we're going to split it because, um, April is also autism month and you'll notice the blue gel on the, on the lights outside. So we'll have to get to, uh, around the fifteenth or somewhere, we'll switch over to.
Okay.
Blue and green, or green and red. Okay. Uh, next, we have the acknowledgement invitation, this, um, Memorial Day and Veterans Day Joint Committee, Select Board, and the Town Administrator and your staff are cordially invited to attend and participate in the Memorial Day parade to be held on Monday, May twenty seventh, ten o'clock. Line up at nine thirty and it will start at the Southwick Plaza and continue, continue down College Highway to the Town Green. Then there'll be a procession to the new cemetery for a ceremony immediately following. And there's usually a stop at the old cer, old cemetery along the way. So put that on your calendar, ten o'clock. Okay, we have a, we have to acknowledge Holly Hamelens' resignation from the Board of Assessors. And that is an elected position, given that we are about a month from elections, I think we can kind of let that ride until the election. I have not seen ballots yet, so we'll see if there's somebody running. And then if not, if yes, then great, if not, then we can make a successor appointment through to the next election. Is that okay with?
Sounds like the way to go.
Works for me.
Okay. Approved library's cash donation of, hold on, eight dollars into their gift account, I need a motion, please.
Motion made.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Approved chair to sign the fiscal year twenty twenty two, fiscal year twenty twenty three, Southwick CDF number zero, zero, nine, seven, seven, Southwick Community Development Program Special Conditions Letter to Boston. And there was a long explanation from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission about that. So I need a motion for the chair to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay, approval donation for the American Legion Auxiliary for two hundred dollars to the emergency management for holding an emergency management information class.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay, and then I have a note here from Jess Menzone, treasurer, collector, and acting clerk, to please reappoint Nancy M. Zedun to the Board of Registars for a three-year term commencing on four, one, twenty twenty four to three, thirty one, twenty seven. Any objection to making that or a motion to appoint?
There's no objections, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay, I'm going to do something we haven't done in a long time. Sign this and we'll send that to Jess so that she can update the book and update the website with the appointments.
Can I borrow your pen?
You may. Can't talk without a pen, though, okay. Approve the Warren article to move.
Here, don't get lost.
Thank you. Approve the Warren article to move the opioid settlement money from free cash to special revenue account and decide which warrant it will be on, on ATM or STM. All the emails I saw, it said it doesn't matter, so I just as soon put it on the special then, so that any free cash that, that it doesn't get swept out to free cash um, from this year, it seems to me. So I would entertain a motion, subject to the, uh, Town Council's approval, to put this on the special ahead of the annual.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye. Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay, and we have a request for us to authorize Department of Public Works to submit the fiscal year twenty-five. DER Culvert Replacement Grant Application. Well, suddenly Mr. Goddard jumps up, so I'm thinking he's here to talk about that. Hello, Mr. Goddard.
Good evening, everybody, uh, the representative and the composer. Um, of what you see before you. The Department of Ecological Resources Culvert Replacement Municipal Assistance Grant Opportunity is something that DPW. Uh, applies to generally speaking on an annual basis. This is a program that is funded very lightly. Uh, from the state level, um, and there are, I'm sorry, it's the three hundred and fifty-one municipalities in Massachusetts. Um, that are eligible to apply this program for support. Uh, accordingly, awards are typically small. Uh, but can range from, we'll call it data acquisition to construction. With construction uh, of our most. Minor. Stream crossings at our public roads coming in that north of a half a million dollars. It's not feasible when a program that just has a couple of million to utilize statewide. Um, back in. Fiscal year twenty-two, we received or executed uh, an award for. The data acquisition, uh, design and engineering and permitting for the Westerly Stream Culvert Klein Road. Um. There was a demonstrated need, this program looks for that ecological benefit and basically it brings these steam crossings into. We'll call it compliance, both for the passage of floodwaters as well as for the movement of wildlife within the stream corridor. Um, and since then, uh, we've been fortunate to receive uh, other grants to support, well, currently in construction. Yeah, uh, moving towards construction on our project right now, we want to look at the culvert just east of there. Um, that's uh, a culvert that historically has been damaged. Um, during severe storm events, it does overtop all the roadway and roads, the embankments on either side. Um, it's a, it's a clear need. We've held off in previous years over concerns that this particular program wouldn't support. The necessary size for that crossing. Uh, we have some initial feedback that says, oh, we think you can fit right under the gun. Um. In terms of sizing, and there's been some additional flexibility communicated from the program, it says, you know what, if you trip past that. Black and white line that says you're now a small bridge instead of a culvert, we'll still support your program. Uh, the other change that uh, we see this particular year, um, is a reflection that we're dialing back the approach a little bit. Um, I steadfastly hold on to the one year we can do it all, um, approach. But that does balloon the cost a little bit for, for an award, this is a no-match opportunity typically. Um, so. What we've done this year is say, let's just do data acquisition. Uh, and we're gonna call it a preliminary level design, just to inform some of those next steps, we'll break this one into three pieces. Um, the data acquisition, the design engineering permitting, and then the construction. Um, one other change to help incrementally uh, increase our scoring on this application is that this year we are looking at. A minor um, financial commitment, uh, if awarded, uh, this particular project. Projected values, what we're asking for is uh, a total of sixty-three thousand from the program. And then it'd be a seven thousand dollar commitment, um, through DPW's existing uh, funding for some minor scope items related to that. Anyway, so they activated him before uh, the select board, in order for DPW to submit this application, we do need an endorsement. Um, uh, from the select board chair.
It has to be signed by the select board chair? Entain a motion for the chair to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Doug, any questions?
Absolutely.
There was a demonstrated need.
And would the project then be eligible under an MVP grant, probably going forward for this, this project or?
Yes, uh, and you know, the more, more meat we can put on the bone, the more appetizing it is uh, for these uh, grant awarding programs to say, there is a turnkey project. You know, let's grab on and make a difference.
Double ready.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other new business? Mr. Vice Chair?
I have none right now.
No, sir.
They had plenty of old business recently.
But I just have, it's not, I guess it's new business, I'm, I'm requesting authorization from the board. Uh, to send a strongly worded letter to Senator Warren to so, in support of the Fire Department Safer Grant. That the chief has already sent one, there was communication, actually, there was a news article today about. Senator Warren telling people, please apply for these grants, great, well, we've applied nineteen times and never got one. So maybe, uh, I doubt my strongly worded letter will do a ton, but it can't hurt. But I'm, if we're gonna communicate, uh, if I'm gonna communicate as a chair of the select board, I would like a motion to authorize. Me to just send that letter as the chair of the select board, with your support in that endeavor for the safer grant.
Absolutely.
And I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you.
Perfect, okay. Any other new business?
Not new, no.
Uh, no, again, no.
Okay, old business, COA Director Internal Posting Application Deadline was Friday the fifth.
It was.
Did we get any applications?
One.
One, and is it the current interim?
Correct.
So. How do we?
It's gonna be a tough interview.
It's gonna be brutal. Can we tell her we had five? I'm not just gonna watch the video, darn it. Alright, so let me, I would suggest that we reach out to the COA Chair and see if they wanna. When they're going to meet next, or at least have a discussion with the COA Chair, I did have one informal, but it should be more, a more formal communication. Um, and then what's your pleasure?
Uh, we need to vote, so, I mean, if that's what they want. Everybody I've talked to has pretty much said.
Agreed.
Please offer to care.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then can we authorize the?
I'll make a motion.
Well, let's, let's, let's have correspondence with the Chair of the COA. And then we'll come back forth with.
For.
To authorize the Chair to, to, to create the um, what, what is it, is that an MOA job or is that? Memory of Understanding Position, yeah, MOU, MOA, whatever, yeah, okay. Uh, high speed, nothing. Um. Did I miss it? Oh, there it is. Marijuana dispensary, any update this week?
I will. Hopefully get some communication from Ben Coyle and then I will wrap up and get something. To you to authorize to post.
Great.
With deadlines for submission, et cetera.
Hunting bylaw proposal related to private land, reminder, public meeting set for April sixteenth, that's a Tuesday, six o'clock. In the auditorium. Um, review of land license for American Legion, I saw a note in the draft warrant, I need to reach out to Ben. Um, to see what's up with that, cause he put a note in the draft warrant. Um, I thought we have to go in front of town meeting for that, so I'll talk to him and find out. Uh. Sixty-one A, we're meeting after town meeting, town administrative recruitment. Well, interviews were Saturday the sixth at ten AM, they were held, we did make up uh. An interim appointment subject to all the yada yadas. Um, I did have the, the pleasure of speaking with Ms. Parker today, I wanted to congratulate her and, and offer any assistance that I could offer. Her in uh, in working on all the stuff that needs to get done and also she needed a tour of town or other introductions and so on and so forth, so. Um. We're gonna move that process along, hopefully we can work on um, the agreement at the same time with all the other. Stuff that has to happen and, and once that is all in place, then she can give her proper notice under her current contract. Um, she did ask me if she could come to the town meeting in May. And I, I said not to be brisk, but, or anyone can come to the town meeting, you just have to sit in the non-voter section. But if, I think it would be, I don't think it would be detrimental to have her there at all, so I extended the invitation. Okay, so. I think we can take the interview part off of the agenda. And I think, do we want to take this off of there or you want to leave it on there until we've settled a contract and all of that stuff?
I think we can remember, yeah, I think we can take it off.
Okay, finally, we take something off.
Like a shorter agenda.
T-Mobile Hometown Grants Application Review Authorization and Pursuit.
Waiting to hear back from Kara and Mike Shield as far as uh, I, I, you have some connection there, that you can get some.
He's, he's out of town this week, I will tell you for a fact.
Alright, so, um, that's all really, I've done, got my portion all done. And then once we know for sure what we need to put in there for the, actually, actually, my portion don't accept that, I need a, a cost. And once that's there, I can finish that portion and then the remaining stakeholders can sign off on things.
Okay. Town Clerk Internal Posting Application Deadline was Friday, April fifth, and the answer is?
Two.
Fantastic. Oh man. Do we want to schedule? Interviews for. It's one, we're not meeting on the fifteenth. Sixteenth, twenty-second. Is that's not, what's that written below that on the twenty-second, that's not a holiday, right?
It's Earth Day.
Earth Day, okay, we'll be well grounded.
Full moon the next day.
Well, even better.
And then Administrative Professionals Day, so it's a busy week.
Okay, twenty-second? Interviews?
I mean, sure.
We have anything, I don't think we have anything else like public hearings or anything that night?
I have additional training, but I'll be mobile.
You'll be here?
Okay, I'll be here, I'll be able to, I'll be able to be back in time.
Okay.
Or scheduled for that day anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it was a work, it was a work thing that if I wasn't gonna be back in time, I wasn't gonna be back in time.
Okay, well, let's, let's put it on for the twenty-second, let's keep this.
Yeah, we should.
Alright. Thoughts on the Master Plan Implementation Committee? Is Mr. Dowry on tonight? I didn't see him, no, not tonight. Hmm?
I hate the mess. Well, I don't have a problem with the composition.
Which is?
The. Only board, select board and three members of the public. If they have at least two.
One, so I had, my last notes, I'm sorry to interrupt, my last notes was one select board appointee, one planning board appointee. And then. One resident select board appointee, one planning board, and it's not right, it wasn't a resident planning board appointee, it should be three residents, right?
Yeah, but you, you had suggested one chosen by the planning board, one chosen by.
That's where I was typing at.
Yeah. Discord and the other one is still the coin.
Well, I don't think it can be a joint appointment because um, that's kind of the one forcible appointment that we have, right? Is the planning board associate is a joint appointment, but it's like playing a five-on-three basketball game, we will lose most of the time. So I didn't, I don't think uh, uh. I don't think it should be a joint appointment of the two boards, so we had a, a planning board member, a, a select board member, and then. I, I, I'd like to figure out how we discuss that, and I know Mike and I discussed it a little bit already and. We'll probably have to come back to him to get his uh. His final opinion, but there was three members of the public. One, two, three. That's six, we need, we need one more, you can't have an even number on a board.
What? That's five.
I was gonna say.
I can't math, you're right, sorry, yeah, three, that's five, so that would work for me, and then, but who's gonna appoint those three?
How about the Economic Development Commission appoints the third one?
Novel. Okay, and then lastly, so then that kind of splits up the appointing authority. And so it really does, it doesn't really much matter from when you look at it that way. Um. It's not a subcommittee of the planning board, it's just, it'll be just like another board or commission. Or a subcommittee of this board for that matter, and it will be chartered, I guess, I don't know if we have to go to town meeting, I need to talk to Ben. Um, or just by our own, or a local, not a local bylaw. But just by the, the establishment of the committee, that we can establish that committee and give it a charter of you. You will report to these guys, you will do this, you will do that.
It would just be an ad hoc committee created, designated by the select board, right?
It would be, and then, but that, but that does create it, then we, we would be the appointing. We would be the responsible party, kind of like lake management, lake management is an ad hoc advisory committee to the select board. These guys would have a multi jurisdictional role, right, they're not gonna, they're, they, they can't command anybody to do anything, but they can, you know, they, they can. Report to and, you know, ask of other boards and commissions to report information to them, just like lake management. Lake management, and not picking on lake management, but lake management has no statutory authority whatsoever, they must utilize. The powers vested in law by those other commissions or boards to enforce what, or to do their bidding. So if they have a problem with the um. You know, the permitting piece on the lake, the dock thing, the uh, the LPP, they gotta go through conservation. If they have a problem with something else, they come through the harbor master or to the select board. Uh, they have problem in Suffolk, right, we're the ones that call up the militia, right? But, and you know, conservation has their lane, planning board has their chapter that they operate under. Are you raising, are you raising your hand, waving, or just?
Okay.
Okay, just a second. Um. So I'm fine with that, and then if, we just have to find out how you charter it, right, by, by the mission. Cause mission, you know, like EDC adopted their own mission statement, but this, we kind of said, you know, I, I think I mentioned it. You know, what I would like, I would like, and you know, subject to discussion here is reporting to the town meeting, so it would be in the town report. Report to the select board and planning board at least biannually, whether we have a joint meeting or they go to both of those boards. Um, identify successful strategies, conduct outreach. Um, and evaluate progress, and there's plenty of. Opportunities for evaluation already in the master plan, I think I called out Norman, he was here at the last meeting. Where those metrics are kind of in the master plan already to evaluate progress, and there may, there may be more added later, but. Um, and then meet at least six times a year.
That's pretty much what I had given you as.
So can, like, can I, with your permission, can I just put that to form, send that to Chairman Doherty for. To agree on it, and then we'll come back and vote on it, and then we can start taking applications, cause we can, they haven't adopted the master plan yet, so. There's no reason to exist yet for the MPIC until the. Master plan is done.
Today, they might do that tomorrow.
Could be, they might be voting on the master plan tomorrow, have you seen their agenda?
It's still on there.
That's one of those meetings where you're gonna wanna pack a lunch, they got like four or five public hearings tomorrow, yeah. And none of them are at all controversial, so they should be fast. Okay. Any other old business, Mr. Vice Chairman?
No.
Ms. Gail.
I'm happy to say that the Board and Commission Handbook is published today. Just in time for us to reappoint soon.
You know what, that's a good point. Um. We should carry for next week. No. Eight, we're not meeting next week.
No.
For the twenty-second, cause the timing is, it's kind of good. If not the twenty-ninth, we've got a little bit of time, cause appointments run through June thirtieth, we'll try to, let's try to move that in a little bit. I mean, last year we're making appointments in September, let's try to pull that in closer to the actual appointment dates for folks. So let's uh. Kind of go over what we did last year, what worked, what didn't work, how we could do better. Um, I think the process was way improved last year compared to previous years, but there's always room for process improvement there. Um. And you know, start, and start again, start outreach for those that are, you know, if there's positions that are coming up that will be vacant or. What have you, but let's start to bring some folks in that want to serve the town on a board or committee that is an appointed position. Let's, let's do that.
Mm-hmm.
Could I make a request too, to add to your business, you have to pick up time, what town you want to start? Could I make a request too, to add to your business? You'll have to pick up time, you want town meeting to start. Because we don't have a bylaw, it, it's planned.
We changed it, though, we do have a bylaw.
Well, it doesn't have a specific start.
No, because we changed it, to take it out.
So you'll have to sign.
Let's carry that to the next meeting.
Yeah, just to put it, I mean, we have time.
Typical is, we don't know what the special is looking like yet, but I'm thinking six-thirty and seven?
I was thinking six.
People, I, I struggle to get here for six, so I, I'd rather have it, that's just me, because I, well, I will not be here, right? But I know, you know, a lot of folks that do work out of town to get back to town to get to town meeting.
We can start the specials.
This one, and looking at the warrant, I, I don't want to say it. Well, I don't care, I won't be there. Um, you know, this one doesn't look like it's gonna go late.
Just because you're not gonna be there.
Right, well, last year we had a couple of.
Start the special at six fifteen.
Okay.
That way the annual would start at six forty-five, the latest.
Okay.
That, that's my.
We'll carry this under, for, for four twenty-two to, for to discuss.
When we're all ready to go to prayer, we'll have that. I mean, that's probably, we probably have an.
We do, we got it today. I think it was like literally four o'clock or so it came across, so, yeah. Do you have any other old business?
Um I did have a question, did we ever get information on the um liquor license, application fee, comparability to other towns? Had asked about that, did we ever get that?
I did not.
Just curious. Because someone's gonna ask us again.
Yeah, probably the next time I go to Tucker.
And it'd be good to know, wouldn't it? So they specifically asked, maybe we can reply once we get that.
Anything else?
That was it, I think.
Old business? Old business? Do we have a need for executive session tonight?
Briefly.
Okay, oh, good, I get, take longer to read this thing? Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee?
Oh, sorry, I didn't get your department. If you don't mind, just a few minutes, as Chairman of the Finance Committee. When we met the other day, you guys met, I was, I think I had a back. You didn't go over um when we redo everything, you guys redo everything, you need to get a line item and a dollar value for the park and rec, park and rec person. Now, stay with me. In theory, the COA, you hire the new one. Technically, the old one, that was the program coordinator, which is her job before cold, pre-COVID, pre, pre-park and rec. You need to look at that job also, because that's gonna go down as far as what the duties are, and you need to put a line, a dollar value for that too, please. Because we're meeting next week as a group.
Okay, we're gonna do that ad hoc at that meeting is what we're gonna have to do, yeah, we're gonna have to.
Alright, thank you.
Because we're not meeting again until then, and I don't think I'm prepared to go into that detail right this very second. Is anything else?
That was the plot line that I was talking about on Bodies and Dollars.
Thanks to everyone who's, who's put in a lot of time on this, I know, I think every single one of us, yourself included, have spent a ton of time on the budget this year, it's been extraordinarily.
And the dollar value is there, you break all that off, I don't think we're talking more money.
No, 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 you're right, we have to cut it up, yeah, you're right, hundred percent. Alright, any other? What's on your other hands? Alright, we are gonna go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Lodge. One more month, then you're reading this, buddy. Mass General Lodge, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, two and three, and Chapter two fourteen. Section one B, Labor Counsel, Litigation Matters and Strategies for Collective Bargaining with Police Union. Coalition Fire IAFF, DPW, Non-Union Staff and Clerk, UPS, EU. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session, move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. The Chair will declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene an open session. Uh move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and the Chair move to go into executive session to conduct strategy. Sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that the Chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. And a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such rights, and in connection there with to award damages. I just want to note here that our agenda states that we will reconvene, I did read this as we will not reconvene. I assure everyone listening at home, we will not be reconvening, and we are adjourning the meeting tonight, and we'll adjourn uh the exec session and conclude our meeting for tonight. I need a motion, please.
Motion made.
Doug Mogan, I. Thank you all.